Okay, we're live now. I'm now calling the board of this meeting in the city of Honeyburg Common Council. But Sam for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united. Right. Well, thank you for those that are here today with their concerns for for the improvement of our city. Thank you for the elected officials. Be with them today as they make their decisions that impact us all. We we ask your guidance that the decisions may be favorable for for all the citizens. For these things, we ask you to understand. Do we have a motion except for minutes from the one twenty eight twenty twenty five meeting? I'll say in that first and second, all those in favor, any opposed, in motion carries. We have the Board of Finance Minutes, which were also provided by Tom that we met on the January twenty eighth also. Your motion to accept those or any questions? Make the motion to approve the Board of Finance Minutes.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We need a motion to for approval of claims. Chance on who they're sitting down there if I begin.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims as presented.
Second.
The first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, uh, uh, order of business is the introduction, uh, the boarding ordinance, I don't, I think, probably a little explanation, uh, really the easiest. Uh, the definitions of boarding are listed in in here, unless anything that's fire hazard, obstruction of access for fire, emergency, or medical response personnel, average reach of insects, rodents, or other worms, and sanitary conditions. Conditions which are offensive offensive to the senses, which interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of life and property by others. A violation of property maintenance codes. A hazard to public health, dwelling, or premise unfit for human habitation, or excessive clutter clutter in spaces, precluding the activities for which the space was designed. And that could be a porch that you can't have access to as an example, or other areas of property that a limited access based upon those, uh, whatever the activities are inside for the area. Uh, the other definitions are there. I think they're pretty well, I don't know, pretty well understood there, um. What we're talking about. So I'm from. I don't know if anybody has any suggestions for changes or if you had a chance to really make suggestions, uh, that would be the time.
Again, the intention of the ordinance is to address, um, public health, safety, and welfare that, um, that the excess accumulation of tangible personal property may cause. Um, so this ordinance would prohibit excessive accumulation of tangible personal property that that contributes to any of that was listed things that the mayor just read off. Uh, and that would include such accumulations on on real estate, uh, on inner on dwellings or motor vehicles. In the city of Honeyburg, enforcement would be by the, uh, city code enforcement department. The code enforcement department would, uh, if he suspects, would request a right of entry to to make an inspection if it's the right is denied by either the occupant or the owner. Then he would seek upon probable cause a, uh, inspection warrant from the New Boys Circuit or Superior Court. Um, violations that are visible from either public property or a continuous neighboring property where consent has been given to observe the violation. Uh, we not require an inspection warrant, inspection, uh, than observance, observation from the from the property. Uh, if if it's determined that there is a violation, a notice is issued to abate the violation, uh, and thirty days are given. Uh, if there's, uh, failures to abate it within thirty days, then it's subject to daily fines, the first day being fifty dollars and then one hundred dollars each day thereafter out to a maximum of seventy five hundred dollars. Uh, and together with the authority of the code enforcement officer to bring in action and Circuit or Superior Court to obtain injunctive relief, that is a mandatory order, uh, to abate, uh, against the property owner or offender to abate the the violation. There is a process for a right of appeal. Individuals who were cited with a notice of violation have ten days from the issuance of that notice to request a review of those public, uh, for the public works and safety. They can present evidence, the, uh, the code enforcement department as well, who would present evidence. Uh, and then ultimately the board of public work could determine whether or not there is a violation, you know, based upon that hearing, the evidence at that hearing. Uh, and of course, there's always the the rights of appeal to Circuit Superior Courts, um, orders of, uh, municipal bodies. This would. Let's figure this would add, um, section one fifty dot zero eight zero to our code ordinances.
I have a couple of questions. Maybe you could offer a little clarity. I noticed that it says in the area, um, section E failure to obey the penalties. It says, um, each day the violation continues to constitute a separate violation until such time as it is abated. Does that, do I interpret that as it's going to be a hundred a day once they get to the hundred dollar level? It's a hundred dollars a day after that, okay? And then.
How many, how many days?
Well, we're, by statute, we're, um, we're not allowed to to find a total of, uh, seven thousand five hundred dollars for a single violation, spray, for any type of violation. So they could accumulate up to seventy five days, I guess, or closer to. It's a hundred dollars a day, uh, for each day the violation continues. There's a limit, uh, tell them that before it gets to seventy five hundred dollars, I assume the code enforcement department would bring in action in court to conduct relief, uh, the court orders. Got to evade the violation.
You have, you're given. Cut you off. You're giving thirty days from the date of notice for cleanup or for to remedy the situation?
That's correct. I mean, just we just chose a number of days, thirty days to remedy.
I'm just trying to clarify that. After they've been notified, they have ten days to feel and they have thirty days to correct the problem.
Right.
The only other question I had had on here is the first paragraph says dwelling. Did only apply to dwellings?
It is, uh, it applies to, it applies to, uh, any, um, dwelling premises or vehicle within the city of Honeyburg.
Okay, I read that one. I got my fault on it now.
And you have premises afterwards, it's just.
Premises.
Personal or tractor, real estate.
The dwelling is considered any building or enclosure which is usually intended, uh, for living or sitting by human occupants, the premises of any tract of real estate within the city of Honeyburg. Tangible personal property is any substance that's capable of being touched or perception by Dutch. Uh, and vehicle is any conveyance on wheels, rollers, or otherwise movable, intended to transport persons or tangible personal property, whether it's motorized or not, presence of a trailer.
Camper.
Camper or trailer that's just has an excessive accumulation that's causing, that's contributing to one of these lists of hazards. Uh, that would be a violation.
So one of the sections here mentioned, um, if a if a neighbor were to give the city permission to enter their property and from that property you can see the violation. That doesn't require an inspection or interior inspection, but could that could an assumption be made that if it's like that on the outside of the house, that it's likely that way on the inside of the house, or there's a chance in that code enforcement officer might, even though they don't have a complaint about what the interior looks like. Could it, could it be, could could that exterior visual lead to an interior inspection?
I'm not certain it could, uh, unless the property owner grants consent to investigate to inspect the property. In order to get, uh, in order to get an inspection warrant from the court, you have to prove to the judge that there's a probable cause to believe that a violation is occurring. And a violation on the outside doesn't necessarily of it in and of itself. When probable cause that the violation is occurring on the inside. Unless it's visible, unless through the windows, it's visible that there's an excessive accumulation of clutter and and debris and and personal property that again contributes to one of these hazardous conditions.
Okay. And then, um, have, has our code enforcement department made any type of offer any kind of commentary or, um, opinion about this particular ordinance and how it maybe is going to be enforced or?
Yeah, the commentary is that this really gives them more teeth, so to speak, or more power to be able to. And and one of the things that, uh, you know, we have to be very careful of, but it's it's in here is being able to utilize the courts such a matter to help us enforce it. Once they hit the maximum fine that's allowed by state statute that we can't go past, that there can be injunctions, it could be contempt or whatever, you know, the judge decides, uh, if they're not following it. See, other thing is it opens up another opportunity for us if we have enough evidence to show that it's on the inside to be able to seek entry into the house. We've not had ability to entry the enter the house in the past without the per, now, now we have that ability to do that. Uh, we've asked for Health Department and different people consent because they do in certain cases, especially in multiple homes, they have that ability, uh, just because of all, but they've not been real helpful, uh, the Health Department in that respect. So now this allows us, gives us more authority.
I know most everybody here, I'm sure, has seen the show or the series on TV that addresses this. And I think I asked Bill this similar question once, and Indiana law is different than probably where that show is being filmed at, but there's a lot of cases in those shows where the Health Department or the Fire Department, um, issues some kind of document that requires the home or renders the home uninhabitable at at a certain date where the where people are literally required to leave the premises because it's unsafe. And I mean, those shows, of course, are extreme, but, um, in Indiana, are are there any, is there any, um, avenue for the Fire Department or a Safety Department or the Health Department to be involved in in requiring an interior inspection if they see something that's unsafe?
Yeah, and they, unless they have the consent of the owner. Well, first of all, if they're there fighting a fire for a bit there for a legal purpose and that they observe the violation, they can be a witness and that be sufficient, uh, grounds for obtaining either an inspection warrant or proceeding with, uh, notice of a violation and citation. Absent that, they have to have probable cause to obtain an inspection warrant to go into the property to stay. Uh, if if the property is, uh, such a nature that it is unsafe for human habitation, we do have an unsafe building ordinance that does permit the city to, uh, to or demolition, uh, the demolition, or that it be vacant. Of course, it's all a matter of evidence. It's a matter of degree.
I I do want to note now that Councilperson, uh, Tim Ware has joined the conversation.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to add a question, one thing on the violation visible from neighboring property. If that permission is given from that landowner, would you guys be best ordered to get a signature that they allow us there to turn that property case it gets sent court?
Well, yeah, uh, probably, I mean, probably a good practice to get something that might give the, yes, consent to your property. It doesn't, I don't think that necessarily has to be in the ordinance.
Right.
That'd probably be a good practice.
We have, we have had a couple instances in the past few months where we've utilized that. Those property owners are adamant that if you're going to release our name, we're not going to let you own the property. So realize that. They don't want to, they don't want to face their neighbor, so to speak. We've had a couple of those instances.
I guess my point is if it gets done in the court thing that, you know, they can judge that we didn't have permission on my property. So, so now.
Well, typically, it's those people that invite you onto the property to observe the, uh, the violation, they want the ordinance enforced. They're they're assisting you and they'll be willing to be a witness, uh, when you, if you have to go to court to prosecute, uh, uh, an injunction order. So, um, yeah, but you're you're right. It's always a good idea to get to get British consent for the property or to come onto the property.
I would like to think that the fact that there is an ordinance and the details will be published for everybody to see that there could, you would like to think that there's going to be some self, some self enforcement, that people are going to say, all right, I think I'm in violation of this and I need to start cleaning up before it becomes a problem. But I can understand that most people that have that problem don't identify as having a problem with themselves. So it's probably going to take some enforcement action around the city to for people to see that we're serious about it. And I think we should be serious about it or not even do it. We shouldn't even have the ordinance. We're not going to enforce it. So there, I think that it needs to be communicated by us to the public and then clearly to the violators what what is coming and and then we need to act, uh, on these circumstances.
I can tell you, code enforcement was very instrumental in pushing this through and they they wanted something that was clear, that allowed them to be able to, and in some of these instances that are on here, um, in the past, they got a little handcuffed by, you know, lack of, you know, they just wanted to organize. So I think Phil did a great job of taking their concerns and in in the, in the play that this ordinance and, you know, he pretty much did it on its own, really. Uh, I can, it it included everything. I think that we all wanted to to be in there and and that's code enforcement as well as myself when we had discussions of what, uh, situations that we have out there, we have not been able to address legally and, uh, that's something that together gives us that authorization to be able to attack.
And I think it's important too to note that it is, I think, whenever we start talking about going into people's houses or things like that, people kind of freak out, but it's only because we do have firefighters or, you know, there have been specific cases where the EMTs or the firefighters were unable to get in the house to help people. So I think this is just where this is an action to keep our neighbors happy, you know, to kind of work together as a city, but also to help those that hoarding is a a sickness. And so I think that it's helping people that don't realize that they maybe need the help before it's too late and we can't help them. So I think that's important to point out too. We're not trying to bully people and, uh, this isn't messy houses. This is a different situation. Hoarding is different.
We've had situations where firefighters were put at risk.
Right, right.
They all, they had to stand back because they couldn't get into the structure.
That's great.
We have a firefighter here that has that.
Yeah, and if you get, if you're called by, called by nine one one fire or police or ambulance, that basically gives you access to the property. So.
Is this, is this written broad enough for, that it applies to commercial and industrial also? Or just for?
No, it's, it's, it would, it would apply to industrial conversion, any premises.
Yeah, so if you had a business and you.
I mean, any premises.
If you had a business and you just kept stacking stuff, you know?
And if it, as a result of that accumulation, it affected and contributed to any of these hazards that are listed, it would be, it would be a violation. And forceful against that property.
Yeah. What do you, what do you think the best way is to communicate this? You know, not everybody reads the paper, I'm sorry, Matt, but not everybody reads that. Um, most people don't listen to our meetings live. How how do we get this information out to people? Isn't there a way that maybe we could include something like this in the utility bills? I know that's a lot of work to step those envelopes, but how how could we do that? To to get the word to people that this is something that is new and it's going to be enforced and they need to comply and I think it would also help with people calling our attention to problems in their own neighborhoods. Um, but I guess how do we let people know? Is there some way we could do that?
I think you suggested utility bill. I don't know of any other way. If people don't read the paper or we don't, they don't, uh, we could publish it on social media. Uh, we we posted on our website. But if people don't access those, uh, media, uh, it's very really difficult. And I'm not sure if people even read, uh, mail, you know, stuff reading in the mail, and you don't know.
I've never read one. I've looked at it thirty six years.
Okay, well, I would have told Tom that you don't read his gas reports.
But I think at least.
The total at the end of the council call.
I think at least if we provide that, then we're, people aren't blindsided by this, this is happening. So if you choose not to read it, that's okay, but I think that at least we provided it to them. And I think that's probably the best course of action because I think sometimes.
I think media coverage is important. I haven't, despite your, our cynicism about people not reading newspapers anymore, they still do. And they still, uh, they read online papers and they read, uh, uh, material, um, and they listen to the radio coverage. So yeah, I, and then we also need to post it on our website and have it available at, uh, the front desk for people who know what's at before and after it's about, if you choose about it.
I'm not the tech guy at the table. That's probably somebody else, but probably Steve. But, um, these QR codes that take you straight to a website or straight to a page on a website. Maybe just printing a simple QR code because it's simple to do. My daughter does it for us all the time at the office. Where somebody just holds their camera in front of it and hits the button and it takes them to that page where could we, could we just add to the newsletter that a new ordinance um, governing the issue of hoarding is now enforced, scan this QR code. That we would even have a way of tracking how many people used it for future reference to see if that would be effective.
We could, we could be as simple as, uh, we send out, I don't know how many media outlets, it's several, we send out our press releases to, we could give a, a connection, a link to build within that and uh, our newspapers have been pretty good with, it's a council meeting and an action such as this about making that a headline because there aren't any other headlines usually in that week or that day, uh, that are worth printing. Uh, you know, I, so it depends on whenever those newspapers are printed and I know that really, there's probably from a media standpoint, there's probably four media outlets from a print or a line that people look at. Uh, but we have, you know, between JTS and and the, and, uh, the Wiz Group, they're, they're very good about recording absolutely monthly interviews with both of us. So we'll share that information where possible.
Yeah.
And we'll do what we can from our standpoint and send it out, letting it be.
We can get it up on the Honeyburg's social media page. All of us can start sharing it too. We'll, we'll travel around.
We have options here, um, to present, have a reading, have a second review or have Phil.
It's a typical ordinance adoption. You can introduce it to tonight if you choose, uh, introduce a number of disorders. And if you choose hold it over, uh, for further, uh, consideration and adoption in a later meeting. Or you can suspend the rules and adopt in the same evening it's introduced. Um, I think generally speaking, an ordinance is of this importance, uh, it's been a practice in the past councils to hold it over for a second reading, but let the public have some input if they want, uh, get familiar with the terms of the ordinance and maybe attend a meeting once, considering the option.
All right. I would like to move as quickly as possible, but I think introducing it and letting it be circulated is going to help with publicizing it. I know I'll have several people call me about it. I'm just, I know that they will and and I, I like the idea of, I like personally, I like the idea of introducing it tonight, but give it at least the next meeting or maybe a month for it to circulate and see what kind of feedback we get from it. And then pass into future meeting.
Do you think there may be some, um, situations maybe brought to light or um, that we would may have to amend or update or something? If we move too quickly, we could miss those opportunities, you know, so I do, I do. I assume Tom has a number.
Maybe twenty twenty five zero six.
Would make an inclusive motion to introduce and also set a date for a second reading or?
Would you, yeah, you could introduce it, uh, by motion, um.
Any, any discussion, Tim, or?
Oh, I'm, I'm all for what you guys were discussing. I know this is long overdue and I'm excited that we're moving along with it. I think there, like you said, I had a person, a couple of people call me and ask some questions about could this be abused? And I think the mayor, uh, explained it to me. It's very clear that, you know, if somebody thinks they're being picked on or whatever, they're welcome to come to the council and talk to us or however. Um, if you'd like to elaborate on that, Mayor, a little bit more would be great, but, uh, I'm all for this. I think it's, it's time to do it. And if we have to adjust it or amend it down the road, then we will, you know, so we're, we're entertaining it and and take a look at it if we have to. So.
In the right appeal, uh, there's also a, uh, provision in there that they would, uh, present, uh, their appeal to the Honeyburg Board of Public Works Safety uh, that would then overseas, uh, our code enforcement people that they report to. So, um, that demand is written, making a written demand to the head of the, of the office of the court trader within ten days of the issuance of the notice of obligation. Now, that would be, uh, appealing parties should be given a written notice of the time and place of the hearing of the appeal these five days advance there too. So our meetings are when they're on Thursday mean that we would have to really, uh, let them know the week prior. Just let them know on a Saturday or Sunday. Uh, so they'll have at least six, maybe seven days notice uh, prior to that hearing to be able to be there. And, uh, they can be their person or they can send a representative to present evidence and testimony and century.
No further discussion. I'm making, uh, I make a motion to introduce, uh, twenty twenty six dash old six, uh, in the source of forty five.
Twenty twenty five zero six.
I'm sorry, twenty five, two, too many numbers in there. Twenty twenty five dash old six. Move to introduce.
Second, okay. First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I have a general call since participants.
Yeah.
Wait, I need to.
I know. Baron.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Bothy.
Aye.
Now, I guess, uh, five ayes, no nays.
You want to propose at this time a time for the second hearing?
So, uh, typically you would, you would consider it at your next meeting, uh, and you don't necessarily have to do final adoption at your next meeting. If you consider it your next meeting, you decide hold it over another meeting, you could do that as well. Uh, but usually you would.
I would say we just move to the next meeting.
It's the twenty fifth, uh, if you recall, that's also the night when you'll have your public hearing on gas rates.
If you want to line up that meeting, you can move to first meeting in March there.
Well, you know, you can, of course, you can, if you've got time, you can consider it that night, but if you want to push it off to March meeting. And hold it over another meeting.
Alright, I think we'll push it off.
Yeah, I will not be able to next meeting, so that might be an issue for that, right?
They're following me at the part of eleven?
Yeah. March eleventh, uh, uh, let me see. Whatever, uh, the next one. March, March eleventh should be good. I was thinking the twenty fifth of February. Crap.
Uh, that's fine. That's, that's just the, the agenda.
Okay.
American to establish that my agenda and if you're, if you're expressing your preference that it be March eleventh, that's, I assume that's what you'll do.
We'll put it on the March eleventh, uh, and and just because of the, the, the threat of maybe severe weather that could impact enforcement of this, that March eleventh heading in spring may be a better time to, so it'll be no excuses. At that time. At that time. Okay, anything else? Have anything else from city attorney Phil Schneider?
That's all I have.
We do have the utilities back debt write-offs. Uh, I think you each have a copy of those. I think that's clearly just understand even though the write-off, that doesn't mean, it doesn't. Release anybody from authority, uh, our ability to, to.
Uh, our. The total write-offs. Were twenty twenty-four, uh, fifteen thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and five cents. Uh, less than one tenth of one percent of what it is.
I would, I would move to make the observation, this is the lowest toll amount in nearly two years. That's a dollar amount.
Well, we had last year, we had ten thousand.
No, and prior to that, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Prior to that, it's been all the way back to sixteen, wasn't it?
Twenty-two seventy-eight.
I'm reading wrong. I don't want to get.
Yeah, you're, you're.
I'm skipping something here or something.
Second, fifteen-three.
Why not? It's a little higher than last two. I'm looking at this number. Total.
Those are revenues.
Oh, okay. I'm looking at the wrong number. Gotcha.
As, as you get a percent of sales.
Percentage. Gotcha.
They're generally less than.
I'm looking at the second number. So it is a, okay, but it's not that that is twenty twenty-one. Let's see where some of the properties are received as soon as that property is sold, can we?
No. So what happens there is if an estate is opened, uh, we can file a claim in the estate. But in many cases, there, there aren't sufficient assets to open an estate. Uh, and so the, the, there's no, no assets to go back.
Okay.
Uh. But we, we check those out. Any deceased, any, uh, uh, count holder who's delinquent, who dies. We follow those and make sure that, uh, if there isn't state openly filed a claim.
Okay. Thank you. I'll make motion. Will you accept the write-off of fifteen thousand or eighty-two dollars and five cents?
I'll say a moment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Need a. We'll need a roll call again.
McBarren.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Multi.
Aye.
Bounce. I guess like, uh, five ayes, no nays.
Okay. Question for you. Would it be hard to find out like how long these people lived in these facilities, these, most of these apartments? Would it be like, are these like all under two years? That's, that's what I was kind of curious. How difficult would it be to find out when they signed up for the utilities and when they ended it?
Uh, you have to go into each one's history. Maybe it can be done.
Well, that's going to be the question. If majorities are under two years, they ain't going to make a difference because I brought this up in the past. Like if they're, they've been there for more than two years, we gave their deposit back to them more likely than they, than they leave. Then they still got an outstanding bill. So that's where I wanted to, kind of curious. Uh, where the majorities are at. I got a film, probably under two years.
With most of them being renters and a lot, being a lot of transient. There's a lot of movement in renters within the city.
Right.
I would imagine these are, it would just be my guess, but that would be, uh. Less than two years.
The, that doesn't, this, if they had a deposit, you would have applied that already.
It would have been applied, uh, before, before this was even done, that deposit would have been applied.
That doesn't, yeah, that doesn't predicate that there wasn't a deposit if you've already taken to apply.
Right.
I think would be interesting to know would be, like first, what percentage are renters versus homeowners? Second, second thing would be the length of time or maybe just they. It was charged off within the two years or it was charged up after the two years?
Oh, I'll, I'll.
Only three or home.
Forty-two renters.
Yeah.
I think it would be interesting to the addresses and if there was a connection between the same addresses for the same landlords and the same tenants. I mean, I think that would be something like a study that would be worthwhile.
I think once they write them off, they, they can't reapply for utilities unless they pay their debt.
They can't go back into the system without paying this.
Right.
Plus a deposit.
But it doesn't mean that if you, if we write you off, Pam, your husband couldn't reapply for the papers.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Two, the three owners and three were deceased.
What, what would be the issue with requesting a credit recorder, a credit check or credit score? Before someone is allowed to turn on utilities?
We can make your deposit.
We, we do a credit. Creditworthiness check, um, basically it's, we get what we can from a prior. Uh, utility and what they have is generally a year. I think our ordinance says two years, but no, nobody has that. So.
So it's history with a prior, with, within our own utilities?
No, with any of the others. If they have a good, if they have a good credit, uh, with prior utility, then we let, don't let them. We don't make them make a deposit. It's like, they're not, if we don't prove, if they don't prove creditworthiness, then we do.
What is the policy when someone moves out? Do they provide a forwarding address? Because there are a lot of these like, since the bills are sent. A month. Right, they just left because they don't have a forwarding address.
That's very one.
Well, the NOL requires that you provide writing to your landlord, I think, forwarding address, but I don't know that there's any follow-up on it.
Provides. The NOL says that the, that if you provide forwarding address to your landlord, then your landlord has to refund your deposit. Or, or, or explain how your deposit was used. Uh, and if he doesn't do that, then you can recover it and attorney fees, uh, cover your deposit plus attorney fees. Uh, but they, but, but they're not required otherwise to give the landlord a, a forwarding address. If they want their deposit back, they're required.
Well, it seems to me that that's probably the problem in most of these is that people are leaving. And the bill gets sent to the empty house or whatever, and the next person doesn't pay it because I mean.
The thirty-one skipped.
Thirty-one skips, so is there way, how can we get around that? Can we do?
I could tell you my love years since, uh, doing utility assistance, most of these cases, they skip to the landlord.
Yeah.
So they skip them both. Yeah. And as being a landlord of two hundred and sixty. That most of the time that they left. The utility, they, they also left the landlord. So.
It just seems like maybe if we could have a forwarding or where we could send the bill to, you don't think that's, I mean, I recognize some of the names on here and it's like. I mean.
Look. They don't register with the post office to forward their mail. They're not going to get it.
I guess that's true.
Well, just. These people. You know.
We need that service.
We, we.
And in addition, we just remember we're also registered with Trex, which is a. Which, which captures the income tax, Indiana income tax refund they're entitled to. Uh, so we have, when they apply for, uh. Our utility service, we obtain a tax ID number and we're able to. Track that with Trex and if there's any income tax refund that they're entitled to, we're able to catch. And we do.
Yeah.
And that's why a lot of our past years, uh. Bad debts have been, have been less, uh, particularly when we're getting, when we had the economic recovery act and everybody was getting huge refunds and that.
Uh, it was a good year.
But the other thing I want to point out is, uh. We are not unusual in just utilities. Every municipal utilities has a great deal of, uh, uh. Bad debt write-offs. Uh, I mean, one, this is less than one tenth of one percent of your revenue. Uh, the other is we, we have four utilities. Uh, a lot of, a lot of cities and towns only have two, maybe water, wastewater. Uh, or maybe electric and water. Uh, but we have four utilities and that's why perhaps our. Our, uh, write-off, uh, looks huge, but, um, but again, it's, it's less than one tenth, one percent.
I think it looks good. I just think if there's something else we could do to help it, but it seems like our, uh, track seems like that's a good avenue to, to take.
Considering like a thirty-five, I mean, this, see, how, how does one, like, that's the largest individual one, but how, how does that happen?
That's a pizza place that was bought.
Was sold, that was sold on contract and he skipped.
Okay. So they would have a much larger monthly bill than, than an average residential property. Yeah, I got it. Okay.
It's like lines.
It is. We, I, I think we angle toward every year, but in the big scheme of things, it's sort of, sort of like a rounding error, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean.
Uh, everything else. And we do get, and we get a fair amount of this back at some later down the road. Yes.
Yeah, they give an extra refund.
Of any guy?
We can, we can track for six years.
Well, you think the percentage is, is it half over time or is it twenty percent or what?
Tom, yes. I don't know. But. If, if they're getting refunds, we're, we're going to get part of it.
You think we could look back on one from six years ago or whether when the law was passed on one of those years?
And.
But, yeah, we, we, it's been.
Is there an easy report that could be run though that would say from twenty twenty, it started out at fifteen thousand, but it's, it's all, it's all, it'll be all manual.
One. A lot of paper. Yes.
A lot of labor.
A lot of labor for one, less than one percent, one to him, so.
Could we maybe go.
I mean, I'm not sure that, what that information other than be. Kind of curious information is not going to help our situation.
Well, did we get a report from the track system?
Uh, we get, uh, reports, uh. We send out letters and we get, uh, on a weekly, weekly basis.
Yeah.
And, uh. We, we, they tell us who they sent letters to after we put it in the file and upload it to them. And, uh. Yes, you know, and, and then once we, once their, their time has passed. Forty-five days, uh, then they send us some money. The, the department revenue.
So they get a letter saying that they're going to, their refund will be less because of their utility bill that they.
And they have, they have a right to challenge that, but we, we haven't had many challenges.
So then at the end of the year, does the Trex give us like a report that says we, we made you five thousand dollars?
See annual report.
Well, actually, I, I think I got a ten ninety-nine.
What did?
Form checks.
Because I mean, even if it's not year to year, if we just knew that since we started it, we could add up these past ones and say, okay, maybe that's exactly who and who, but.
I think, I think you get that. Free. So, uh, it's a total of Trex and then the years by.
Yeah, because that would maybe like not specifically who is who, but just the overall percentages.
No, that's, I, I think that's. I think I provide that to, uh. I don't know what it's been done this year because we just started the season. And it ends about, uh, the end of September, October because. All the refunds are. So you have all the taxes, usually it's done by. So, and that's. If you don't have it, I can get it for you as far as, you know, what, what the latest report was.
My only interest in knowing that is simply that we spend a lot of time talking about every year and maybe we don't need to. It's like, in the six years, it's going to be three thousand or five thousand, then because we've collected it over that six-year period, it's really kind of a non-event. So. But if we're not collecting, but, you know, ten percent over time, then maybe we ought to try to find some ways to. To tweak the amount we either recover or keep the bills from getting so big by reevaluating our policies on it or, um. But anyway, again, it might be that it seriously is just not that much money. Right now, and by six years from now, it's going to be even less because we have been successful in collecting it. I guess we could look back and just see how much we've collected over the years that we've over.
I'm thinking probably it was in October or something like that. Yeah, but, but I can get, I can get it out, yeah.
Yeah. Just around about it. They gave you an annual statement. We could see what totals were and just what.
Well, they, they would give us that, but we also keep a, a running tab of what we get each. Each hit, that's what we call it.
I do think people, I do think companies in the private sector would be perfectly okay with this percentage.
Yes.
I guarantee you.
Yeah.
Most of these look like they're, there's only probably six or seven that are multiple boxes.
Yeah.
So they consider, we have a lot of them that are less than a hundred dollars, so.
Yeah, those are where the, the deposit was applied against their balance due, so it's, it didn't cover it. Maybe it didn't, they owe twenty-four dollars, forty-two dollars.
Yes. Other than an automated system, it's pretty hard to chase somebody down for forty-two dollars.
Yeah. Does this report peeling anywhere?
Yeah.
Okay.
What if it was?
Well.
I don't.
I don't think we can, uh, publish, um. Bad debt names like that. Privacy concerns. The names of these debts.
Yes.
Well, does it hit like their credit score or anything? Are we helping other people for this not to happen to other people?
I, I don't know. You report to your, you, you report to a credit group, credit reporting service. Um, but they do get reported to the Indiana Department of Revenue and, uh, their refunds. Getting so westerned.
I will guarantee they probably don't have a very high credit score anyway. That would be my guess.
Yeah.
I can't do any worse.
I lived in this world for a while, I can tell you. But, uh, yeah. All right, uh, we have any citizens items today if we don't have any. We have some citizens here that. From an opportunity to speak and will put out their time. Then we'll have council items after that.
Nothing. Okay.
You do?
Of course.
She might voice that every time when I give a speech.
I came to the. Council meeting, the safety meeting. I was forgetting to leave meetings.
For public boards.
And shared with this. And I remember, I, I remember addressing vehicles on the street and why it couldn't be included in with this ordinance. It is. So streets, so like law enforcement, what can they do?
Well, this, this proposal, this is enforced by the code enforcement. They see this and believe that that contributes to one of those hazards. Looks like it may. They could cite the owner of that, you know. The problem is the police department is unable to get. They're unable to get ownership records by, by state law. They're unable to get ownership records to code enforcement department. Unless they are in fact forcing a, uh, uh, by movie violation. On, on public street.
So if you look at one side, you see one day, uh, where it was windy and things had blown off. And then you see, if you turn on the other side, so things were cleaned out. Three days later, you can see what we turned around back to. I know it's hard to see in the picture, but it was the same thing. So I guess that's my concern is where is it that whenever we take this up on the property to a vehicle? How can that be? Because when I was talking, and I'm not going to speak for our police. But the, one of the frustrations was that they can put a sticker on the vehicle, they can clean it up, but then it can also then be cleaned up. And then three days later, it can be the exact same thing. And then it's another sticker and it's not a continuation, but it's the same problem. That makes sense?
So it hits the problem and start a few ten-day or thirty-day period.
One day.
And it happens, yeah, it happens over and over and over.
And so it, to me, it makes the law enforcement look weak because they can't do anything. Their hands are tied. It gets very frustrating because they costed a ticket to put on the vehicle. You know, it's out of their budget. And then, you know, a day later, three days later, then they can't, it's another ticket and it's not. So, you know, are we just transferring from the property to a vehicle that's on the public, public parking? And we're really not fixing what the problem really is? The vehicles then become.
Well, if we can identify the owner of the vehicle, the, the code enforcement officer can issue a citation, a notice of violation and then start. If it's not cleaned up to thirty days, start a hundred dollars a day fines. And then finally, you know, if necessary, uh, an action part, a jump to relief.
I, I knew we had talked about it before, but I couldn't remember what the answer was.
Well, you know, Bill and I haven't met on this, but you know, one of my suggestions is, you know, if it's, it's something that's reoccurring, uh, you know, that we maybe have those type of activities under a, a kind of a nuisance ordinance, uh, where those things do accumulate over time. Uh, so, you know, ten violations becomes a nuisance.
Okay, I see.
Uh, you know, those type of things, but it would be, we need an all inclusive ordinance that covers everything else that, that's, and we're dealing with, you know, if we tell somebody eight times a year to mow the grass, does that become a nuisance to we, fight each time, you know, that, uh, however legally that is, and then I, maybe speaking a little louder, because I'm not an attorney yet, and, and, and aware of state statutes, but, uh, if there's a way that we can have more teeth available to, say that, you know, the second time may be a more severe nuisance than just one time.
It's, it goes really difficult to draft some ordinance, some of these offenses, because it's, it's impossible to anticipate every offensive thing that people come up with, you know?
Oh, yeah.
It's just amazing, and, and whoever thought you'd have to have an ordinance for him at that time of time, but sometimes you do, it's, it's really difficult to anticipate everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. We have the other, uh, citizens or council items. With most of the.
Let me please, we, we have, we have, we're, we're, you're too late.
I'm gonna pass these out, we are the, uh, twenty twenty fours, uh, all our funds, uh, caches, that was the beginning and ending, uh, the revenue and expense reports for each, for, for each fund, and then the, the balance sheets for each fund. I mean, I'll give it to you, but I just wanted to.
Those are hot off, already.
It's a lot of paper.
Well, yeah, it's got the name on it there, so.
Yeah, each, each one of us getting one of these, right?
You get a whole, you, you get a whole packet of three.
Okay.
Steves.
He just fucking can't sleep.
Lions. Jeffs. Lance. And I, I, Towns, I'll put it in your box.
Thank you, okay.
But the state of the city, or the state of the court, driven.
Well, it's.
Now we have this, we'll also be scheduling the state of the city's address in March, or that, doesn't, it does have to occur annually on the, on the general, uh, financial condition of the city, uh, but we're putting together those reports now from each department, too, on where it is, and, uh, really looking at it, we do that prior to one of the council meetings, probably the second one in March, right now, waiting early for Tom to bring the final, uh, numbers to us today, and I don't think that the eleventh or the twenty fifth of, of this month, or the, excuse me, uh, the two meeting, July twenty fifth and the eleventh are gonna be appropriate, because there are gonna be a lot of meetings, a lot of information, so really, we can march twenty fifth for that report. And we'll do that, tell advisor prior to, uh, take about fifteen minutes, so we'll start that council in about fifteen minutes, probably with, with the city press.
And I do want to say that those are, those don't include the utilities, because you should already have utilities.
They came at the end of the year.
So, we, we, come in, you don't.
We do.
I've seen one board like that.
We, I think you're on.
I didn't see the thing, but we go class, but.
Okay.
It should be, it should have been.
So we, we, we still do have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we have.
Second.
No, wait, I, uh, the next year.
Stayed for a whole meeting this time.
How about it, Aliyah?
Um, we're going to the state legislature, um, branch, right?
Yes. I don't know the date, that's a day.
Uh, yeah, we haven't set the date yet, but that's where we're gonna be heading, and then we do have a fundraiser going on right now for Mayor's Youth Council t-shirts. So, um, if you wanna order one of those.
I will email you the link if you're interested in getting the t-shirts of Mayor's Youth Council, I'll send it out to all of you, uh, and everybody that's here, as well as, anybody else I think may be interested with this, first, another fifteen dollars, uh, for the t-shirt, twenty five dollars, sweatshirt, looked very nice, I ordered mine already this morning, uh, right away, so we'll send that out to you, I was, thank you for bringing that up, because I have it on my list, the emails, while I'm there.
That's very similar. Do you have a cause and a goal for the t-shirt fundraiser?
Right now, uh, we're just trying to get more money for our, uh, personal, um, account, uh, we do have money set aside and with you guys, but, uh, this is just for school, um, we're gonna put it towards the community garden idea, um, we're gonna have the city pull out the bricks eventually, and then we're going to purchase, uh, some already pre-made, uh, garden beds.
They have some pre-made, as well as you have, some people at school are gonna build some wooden ones, too, as one of the other classes participate in that, and we'll use our purchase part to help install those, make them look good out there, so. They have eight hundred and sixty four dollars in their account, and that's, it'll buy, what, three of those beds?
So. How many are you trying to give to?
Um, I don't.
Depends on how many the other group can make, I guess, I don't know, and, uh, you're having a bake sale, too.
Right.
Okay.
You know what their herd, herd bed cost is?
Two, two something, are they?
Um, we were looking at a couple different sites, so it's a different price, depending where we go.
I think it's around two thirty for the one you looked at, is that right?
Yeah.
Have you thought about maybe doing like, um, an adoptive ed or something, kind of like they do, like, if, like, if a, I could see like maybe some businesses adopting a bed, and then just giving projects to neighborhoods or whatever.
And it's something we talked.
Yeah, we talked about giving people options, and maybe they need something on those decorating, but, you know, their, their own touch.
I also, is there a water source there?
I don't think so.
I think I'll issue that beyond.
I mean, I don't wanna put anything wrong, but we did have a community garden in Indianapolis, and that was a big thing, like it during the drier months, to not have a water source, um, we were able, well, you know, what we did there, and I don't know if it's peaceful here, was, um, once a week, we had a watering day, and we would get, um, as a key from the fire department and use the hydrants to water.
Yeah, we do have the ability to do, we have actually a, uh, truck, uh, with a, uh, tank, with, yeah, with the tank, which, that's what waters all the plants in Core Street, that's how they stay watered in Market Street Park. Uh, and sprinklers, but Core Street does it in the alleys, so we utilize that, we also use to wash down the alleys, and that type of thing. So it comes to drought conditions where we could add that ability. And water bills.
What kind of cost would there be to just put a water supply there?
No, no, well, it's probably, it wouldn't be that difficult, other than the cost of the water.
Yeah.
Who's gonna be paying for the cost of the water, and, and would they be, they'd have to be exempt, sewer, we put the wastewater. So, uh, we could send the bill, what you're interested in.
Well, but I mean, if they, if, like, we're doing the tank system, that would also last.
They're watering, they're watering other places on Core Street and stuff, it's not that big a deal.
Yeah.
Probably had a walk for a run.
On this.
We had.
Well, I mean, some things like waters are pretty important.
We, we, we do have the ability to pump water, too, so it's not always, you know, we have to pull it out of the plane or something, uh, with, with the tank, because we don't need portable water.
Yeah, might even be better.
Yeah, but, yeah, more nutrients.
Okay, so I'll make that motion again to adjourn.
Right, your second. All those in favor?
Aye. Bounce.
Aye.
Multi.
Aye.
Kissel.
Aye.
Where?
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names. I guess. We're, uh, Smith's, I've got six thirty one. Thank you, yes.
You miss the opportunity of getting, having a ten paid one. I can use that.
Yeah. Yeah, it's totally fine.